Our personal counsel Doug tried twice and tried to call.
Okay, I'll just wait for you. Ready? Call the Newport City Council meeting to order from Monday, October 2nd, 2017, 6:30 PM. All members of the council are present. I would include James Johnson, Anna Clark-Prieger, and Laura Noggin, our city manager. The second item on the agenda is to approve the minutes of September 18th, 2017. That would entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I'll make a motion to approve the minutes of 18th September 17th.
A motion made, it's now second?
It's now second.
Made and seconded, discussion on the minutes. Have any others in favor say aye?
Aye.
Oppose? Ayes have it, motion carries. The next item is comments by members of the public. Before we get into that, I just wanted to read a quick note. Says Mayor Minette, Newport City Council. Quick note to thank you for your generous donation to Wednesdays on the Waterfront. We are beyond excited about the success of our event and are grateful to you for your part in making it happen. Without the support of our generous community and local businesses, wow would not have happened. We ended the concert series with almost 1,000 people and joined the final concerts. We are excited and look forward to next year. Thanks again, Andrea and Vero. And that was addressed to the mayor and the city council.
Yes.
Okay, opening up for public comment. A lot of these comments from some folks relate to, I think, the presentation, so I may hold off on it. Stan, yours?
Yeah, it would be to the president.
Okay, just one, because I just gonna have complete answer, question and answers for that after the presentation.
I don't have really a question or anything, I just want to hand something out. I do need to go to work, so I'm wondering if I could just...
Okay, that's okay, yeah, you can do that. I was just, some of these related to the presentation and they just wanted to... Yeah, if you want to hand something out, you can. Have you done, you want to go ahead?
Sure. So I'm Diane Theo and I have the 99 Gallery and Center, which is a small community center, art gallery in downtown Newport. And a few months ago, we had some meetings with, like maybe eight to 10 people came from Newport and surrounding communities to talk about what to do with the hole. And we have a lot of other projects we do at the 99, so it was really hard to get back to this and get something together, but realized that we needed to do that immediately. So I did put something together that was a result of the meetings. There are probably some comments from people that came to meetings that didn't get in here, and I apologize for that. But at any rate, this is public input on what to do with the hole. And folks here from the consulting firm, they have a copy, I'd like to give you guys. I only made five copies, because this was like a rush job, so you'll have to share. It's available online, if you want to write this down, at our blog, which is www.occupynek, that's O-C-U-P-Y-N-E-K dot blogspot dot com. So you can read it there. And that's about it. So I just want to give these to you guys and ladies, sorry. There's only three. Oh, I think there's another one floating around, so there's four. So there you go, you can share.
Yeah. That's okay, that's open up to anybody. You didn't have to slide up to that. That's open up to everybody, because that's a question and answer on that. Okay, and something on, says Go the Extra Mile, is that Sue?
Susan Watson from Spruce Street. Today I was reviewing the information that was sent out. And on page 59, Paul had issued an edict for November 1st being the day to go an extra mile. I just want to quote that, a short paragraph out of that. He says, "I urge each individual in the community to take time on this day, to not only go the extra mile in his or her own life, but also acknowledge all those who are inspirational in their efforts and commitments to make their organizations, families, community, country, or world a better place." There have already been people who have been very inspirational in their efforts to make Newport a better place. My question is, I think the edict is great, but I'm wondering, besides we recognizing other people, how the mayor, the city manager, or the council would recognize those people? I haven't seen it done in the past, but I like this idea, and I'd like to know how all of you are going to recognize the inspirational work of people.
This is a national proclamation that we've been doing for the past few years. We join with many other communities. It's like a generic, in a way, it's a generic, but it recognizes anybody in the community. It doesn't, it's not for just specific individuals. It's anybody who goes an extra mile, volunteers with an organization, and that's how this...
But my question is, how are they recognized? I know, I know it is to recognize people, but I'd like to know how these people who go the extra mile are going to be recognized.
You know, it's a national program. What we've been able to do within our budget is put a sign up at the fire station that, I think the date is, it's a Sunday usually, November 1st or November 2nd?
It's usually November 1st.
Yeah. And we acknowledge that it's the Go the Extra Mile Day. We don't have a budget to do more than that. It's an opportunity to take pause and recognize the unsung heroes, not just from city leadership, but for everybody.
But that's the question. I don't think it costs anything to recognize someone.
But this is recognizing people by having a proclamation. Many communities have proclamations recognizing people, but you don't recognize individuals. It's a generic proclamation.
But it says each individual.
Well...
You can't make it better than that.
I can. This is something that we were given by the extra mile folks. It's a generic, it's a proclamation recognizing, what, do you want us to recognize individuals? Because...
Yes. I think that would be a good idea. I mean, it's...
I mean, this is just to recognize anybody in the community. It's not, I mean, I started doing this a few years ago, and it's just a proclamation. We join in with many other communities around the country to recognize anybody who donates to their community. It's not geared for specific individuals. It's geared for anybody in the community who goes above the extra mile. It's not geared for individuals. It's just recognizing anybody in the community. Well, I...
You say individual in your letter, so...
Well, it's, I'll be honest, it's a template that they ask us to use, a proclamation. I don't write the individual.
We thought it was a good thing.
Yes, I thought it was a good thing.
Well, I think it's a good thing too, and I think there's been...
I didn't think I would be caught on the carpet, no, caught on the carpet over it. Because, but, because, but...
Well, you signed your name, Paul.
Well, I did sign my name, and I interpreted it as recognizing anybody in the community who goes the extra mile. It's not individual. It may have said individual, but it's a generic, it's done all over the country. Newport signs on with big cities, small towns throughout the country. And it's to recognize, and so I'm not going to go anymore. There's your answer right there. What? It's to recognize individual citizens collectively, it says. If you were to start naming individual people, like for instance, I put you on the list, what happens if I skip Jim back there? I mean, he's done something. He's gonna get a little upset probably. What if I miss some of these other folks who have done things? You can't go around just naming individual people. You'd have to list the whole city.
Maybe the letter should have been rewritten.
That's a possibility, but the way this is written, what the mayor says, is to just encompass everyone that does volunteer. This is a template that they ask us to use, the group that does this. And so it's what we've been using for the last several years. Okay. I have Downtown Newport Great Minds.
That really relates to the Whitenburg. If you're going to allow us to make comments and ask questions, then I don't need to make them now.
Yes, that's when that will be pertinent. Stan Chop, that was the hotel. Woodman Page, was yours related? Ken Carte, is yours related to the...
It's one of the groups that are running it, I'm just trying to find out. Like NCRSC, are they still working with the city and these people?
Yes.
Well, no, they're doing a heck of a job, because I know you said something about that. They had to keep going to work with TIP to get your TIP? Or did, I took it wrong, I already had it.
Well, no, we need to start planning on preparation for the TIP district, because it's about an 18-month process to, and we need to start now if we want to start working on getting TIP for downtown.
Because every group is, I think is fantastic.
That's a collaborative effort between NCRSC, the city, consultants, even the state of Vermont. We all have to work on that, because it's...
I just thought they were having trouble, so...
No, no, that's something that we haven't started yet, that we're gonna have to. It's on the radar scope for what we need to do for, because TIP will play a vital role in the downtown.
That's it, that was it with that?
Yeah, okay, very good. Okay. That's it for that, then we'll move on. The next is Whitenburg, final report on the BCDP planning. We have David White and Joe White here to make the presentation. Welcome.
Where would you like us to be as we do this? Should we just sit here? Should we stand? What's most convenient?
Stand, whatever you feel comfortable, whatever's most comfortable for you.
I'll stand. So good evening, everybody. I am David White, I'm president and principal of White Burkhole State Investment Advisors. With me is Joe Wyeth, and it's, the names sound similar, but they aren't the same. Mine's like the color white, and his is Wyeth, with a TH at the end, anyway. With the David, Joe T. And Joe is a senior project manager with the company, has been project manager for this project throughout, but I did want to make a few introductory comments. First, we are, couldn't be more excited about working in downtown Newport. You know, my, some people, a few people didn't know, but my career in doing real estate-related work in Vermont started in a downtown, in this case downtown Montpelier, back around 1980, and very involved and invested into a downtown revitalization. And I care deeply about the downtowns in our state, and as we all know, many like Newport's are struggling in various ways. It's not easy, particularly looking at kind of the growth in Chittenden County and some of the decline that's going on in population and economic activity elsewhere around the state. It's a real challenge, and it's a challenge that we find stimulating, exciting, and one that we really are very enjoying genuinely, and personally and professionally be involved with. With respect to this particular project, our charge really has been to look at the Renaissance block, or some people call it the hole in the ground, and to think specifically, given what's happened with the whole EB5 debacle, and given that it's now under control of the receiver, what is feasible there? What could happen there? And so we've been, our charge has been very focused on that specific piece of property. But philosophically, as you'll see in the presentation Joe's going to make, that we believe you can't look at that property in isolation. It doesn't sit there in isolation. It is a core piece of property within the broader context of not only downtown Newport, but the broader region as well. And so as we've looked at it, while our focus is on that property across the street, we have necessarily looked at the rest of downtown in particular, and more broadly in the region, to find out what's going on, and how do those things that are going on elsewhere in the region influence what might be feasible on that property? So that's kind of the way we've looked at it. It's been a little bit more expansive than the narrow focus on the property, although that is, and I want to be clear, that it is the property that is our specific charge with at least this phase of work. If we do more work with the community, it may be a broader charge. And that said, I also want to be clear that our responsibility here is not at all to say, this is what should be done, or to dictate that the right solution is X, but rather, our focus and our responsibility has been to do baseline research and analysis, to understand the marketplace, to look at the potential users for the site, to think about what are the issues and opportunities here, so that you as a community, as you go forward, including with the work that'll be happening, commencing sometime soon with the Council on Rural Development, can, that this feeds into that process, and so that you as a community can enter into your discussions about where you want to go from here with a better and stronger base of information. So while there's some specific ideas we put forward, and there are some recommendations we make about further steps to take, we're not recommending any specific project or any specific use. We'll talk a little bit more about that as we go along. Now, there are some additional research steps we're recommending that relate to specific uses, for example, a hotel. But that, again, the concept here is to provide, with the report and the work and the analysis we've done, is to provide a base of information to help you and the broader community as you go forward with your planning and visioning process. And so we hope that it's taken in that spirit, because that's certainly the way it's intended. With that, is there anything else I should be saying by way of introduction?
I think you got it all. Okay, perfect.
So I'm gonna turn it over to Joe, and, because he did most of the work, and if I try to do it, I'll probably put my foot in my mouth.
Thank you. Thank you for the introduction. Well, it's great to see such a great turnout here. Thank you for coming, everybody. And as David mentioned, our overall charge in this project was really to focus in on the Main Street site and evaluate the development potential for that site. And with input from the city and from the steering committee that was put together, formulate some strategies, some strategies that are realistic and market-based that will hopefully lead to a project actually getting built on that site. Our work over the past few months has involved a considerable amount of research and assessment, like David said, which really has gone into informing the strategies that we're recommending. And that research and assessment included reviewing previous studies, reports, and plans for the downtown and the region as a whole. We conducted a market assessment, which was a pretty important piece of our research. We prepared an opportunities and constraints analysis, which helped us better understand what the existing conditions were in downtown, and identify some opportunities where we might want to focus our efforts. We also prepared financial pro formas for several hypothetical development scenarios on the site, so we could get a better understanding of the economic viability of a project. And then finally, we conducted a number of interviews with local and regional stakeholders, again, just to get their insight, which is very valuable. So all of that work, all of our findings, conclusions, and recommendations, we summarized in a report, which has been given to the city, along with a big section of appendices. But what I want to do, what we want to do tonight is just highlight a few of the more important findings and conclusions that we found, and then also then just describe the strategies that we're recommending going forward. So I want to take some time to give a brief overview of the market assessment, also talk about and share with you some of the common themes that we heard through our interviews with local and regional stakeholders, and then we'll move into just presenting the strategies for moving forward. So one of the first things we did with this study was to conduct a market assessment. And that was so we could gain a better understanding of the general market conditions in Newport and in the surrounding area, which would then allow us to assess the economic viability of potential redevelopment opportunities. And in conducting this study, we reviewed and analyzed readily available economic indicator data like population, and employment, and labor force, and things like that. We reviewed previous studies, market studies that we could find. And we also spent a lot of time interviewing local and regional real estate and economic professionals who work in the marketplace every day. And I'm just gonna jump to the conclusions. We do have a market assessment report, which is part of the appendix to this report, which has a lot more detail, but I'm just gonna briefly go over our conclusions. The first conclusion is that the general economic condition of Newport City can probably best be described as being stagnant. Over the last 10 to 20 years, the city has seen declines in population, employment, local labor pool, which has resulted in soft market demand for retail, office, industrial, even market rate residential. On a positive note, though, there has been modest growth in the primary market level and in the county level. And by primary market, we define that as a 25-minute drive time from downtown Newport. But these larger areas have seen some modest growth in population, employment, and labor force. Actually, not labor force, but housing. So there might be an opportunity for Newport to tap into some of that growth, particularly as it relates to offering additional housing choices, or maybe tapping into some of the growth that's been occurring in the leisure and hospitality sector. There appears to be strong demand for affordable housing in the city, and we believe there's some demand for higher-end apartments. However, the extent of that demand for the higher end is really unknown at this time. There have been recent trends in Vermont, as well as across the country, where there's a desire to move into downtowns from millennials, empty nesters, retirees. And also, there's been some experiences recently in downtown where some housing units have been converted into higher-end apartments, and they've been renting out pretty nicely. So that's a good positive sign. From a locational standpoint, the downtown is well-suited for certain uses that can take advantage of convenient walking distance to shops and restaurants, the lake, and other downtown amenities. So that includes uses like housing, office, hotel. Another conclusion that we found is that public-private partnership will be crucial in helping to make a development project financially feasible. The soft demand and low rental rates are insufficient to support the high cost of construction for new buildings, so there's likely going to be a gap. And public partnership and assistance will likely be needed to fill that financial gap. Public infrastructure investment will likely be needed. We find this throughout all of our downtowns in Vermont. Typically, these projects require some level of infrastructure, whether it be a streetscape improvement, or utility upgrade, or public parking facility, something of that nature, is usually needed to help with that project. Downtown Hotel, David had mentioned, is there sufficient demand? There may be. We spoke with several of these stakeholders who feel that there is sufficient demand. I also spoke with a couple of Vermont hotel developers who are very intrigued by the concept, and are willing to explore it further. So that was a positive sign. And then finally, the final conclusion is that downtown revitalization requires a comprehensive approach that involves implementation of multiple economic development initiatives. David touched on that earlier. And, you know, this comprehensive approach is needed to create a critical mass of activity, excitement, interest in the downtown, which will in turn generate interest from the private sector. I'm gonna spend a little bit of time talking about the stakeholder interviews and just touch on some of the common themes that I heard from people. This was a key piece of our study. Spoke to over 30 local and regional stakeholders, including business leaders, real estate and economic development professionals, developers, landlords, bankers, and representatives of healthcare, educational, housing, and public institutions. And the purpose of holding these interviews, there's several reasons why they're beneficial. First of all, it allows us to obtain valuable insight from people who live and work and breathe Newport and the surrounding region on a daily basis, so their insight is very valuable. It also helps us understand what you all see as challenges and opportunities related to economic development. These interviews also can often yield ideas for the Main Street site, you know, good ideas that maybe haven't been thought of yet or discussed yet, and are worthy of further exploration.
Joe, I'm wondering, were there any Newport City residents in the stakeholder interviews for this study?
I don't know where these people lived, but I know there are a number of business owners here in town as well. We did introduce some regional people as well. Yeah, I don't know where they live. And then finally, another reason why we do this is sometimes these interviews can lead to identifying an actual user, you know, somebody who's interested in going into a new building, that we could possibly use as an anchor. So very important to talk to these people. So I'm just gonna go through some of the opportunities. I'll try to be quick here. Several people expressed a need for a voice for downtown, a person or an entity that could take the lead in carrying out economic development initiatives. Many people said more needs to be done to make downtown more interesting, so that locals and more locals and tourists are attracted to the area. So more downtown events, interesting stores, things of that nature that'll bring people downtown and make it more interesting. There were suggestions to attract uses that will generate activity and support local businesses downtown, uses like housing, hotel, offices with employment. This one, I think I heard from just about everybody, and that's leverage the lake as an asset. You have an incredible asset right next to your downtown, which is somewhat hard to get to and enjoy, mostly because of the railroad tracks. So a lot of people were saying, you know, what more can be done to create a better connection to the lake, so people can take advantage of it and enjoy it more? Similar to that was to leverage recreational opportunities in the area. Perhaps market, all the biking that goes on, the boating, the fishing, the hunting, and so forth, enhance access to the recreational opportunities, and hold more recreational events, you know, similar to what Hand of Games did. But try to do it more throughout the year. Few other opportunities include tapping the Canadian market. I heard from a number of people that Canadians like to spend money. They like to go out to eat and have fun. So maybe there's a way that we can pull more people down from Shebrook or Montreal to visit Newport. Coordinate with JP to attract more tourists in the area. You know, maybe more can be done to create an actual relationship, where maybe a shuttle service runs back and forth on a regular basis, where people visiting JP could take advantage of things going on in Newport, such as the lake, maybe sailing lessons, other shops and restaurants, and vice versa. restaurants, and vice versa. Provide incentives to attract business and development, things like tax breaks, access to revolving loan funds, and consider establishing TIF district, the Tax Incentive Financing District, the mayor was talking about. Leverage funding and programs from economic development agencies like NVDA, NCIC, Northern Border Regional Commission, Vermont Department of Housing and Community Affairs, and so forth. And then finally, there's been an idea thrown out there to possibly convert the State Office Building to other uses that would better benefit from a lakeside location, such as a hotel. Some of the ideas I heard from stakeholders for the Main Street site include a hotel conference center, perhaps a rooftop deck, or restaurant or bar on the top to take advantage of the beautiful views. Mixed-income housing project that would offer units at market rates, units that are affordable to the workforce, as well as senior housewives. Another idea was a mixed-use project consisting of retail, Class A office, upscale apartments, wellness center, urgent care center. Heard from a couple of people. Senior and/or assisted living with perhaps with a link to the hospital would be a good use. Brew Pub Distillery, heard this from a number of people. I'm surprised that you don't have one already. But one of the ideas we talked about in our last steering committee was, wouldn't it be cool if maybe two or three breweries opened up in downtown Newport and made Newport a beer tourist destination? You know, it's been done in other communities, and I'd come up here. Perhaps a new courthouse. There's been talk about...
To handle the drunken disorder.
There you go. The courthouse, the state, they've been evaluating their complex and trying to figure out what to do with it, understand some of the improvements that need to be made. So maybe there's an opportunity to build a new courthouse on the New Street site. And then finally, higher education was recommended by a number of people. Perhaps Linden State College, Vermont Tech, might want to increase their presence up here. Maybe they'd be willing to expand. So that's just a brief overview of what I was able to learn through my interviews with various stakeholders. So let's talk about the strategies for moving forward. So our research and assessment reveal several fundamental realities that influenced, to a large extent, the strategies we're recommending. And I just want to go over those real quickly. I've already touched on some, but these are pretty important. You know, the first is public partnership and assistance will be crucial. As we found in our market assessment, as well as the financial analyses that we prepared, market demand and rents are insufficient to support the high cost of construction as well as the cost of land. So there's going to be a gap. And, you know, what can we do to fill that gap? Public partnership and assistance is one way to do that, and it's probably going to be pretty important to help make a project financially feasible. Another reality is that pursuit of redevelopment project should focus first on identifying specific users. Because the market is the way it is, it's very unlikely that a developer is going to come in and build a building aspect with a basis. They need to have tenants. They need to have somebody committed to go in and operate and pay the rental rates that are necessary. Lenders require that as well. So our recommendation is that we should first be trying to find a user, and then once we find that user, we can figure out how to pay for a project and fill those financial Another fundamental reality is that, talked about a little while ago, is that the modest regional growth that's been going on in population and employment may present an opportunity for the downtown. Perhaps housing, perhaps a hotel that can take advantage or leverage the growth that's been going on in the last five, 10 years in the leisure and hospitality sector. And then finally, again, downtown revitalization requires a comprehensive approach that involves multiple initiatives designed to generate a critical mass of activity, excitement, and interest. So the first strategy we're recommending for going forward is to pursue a possible purchase of the Main Street site by a local or regional nonprofit development entity. And the primary benefit of this type of entity owning that site is that it allows the community to have better control over the type of project that eventually gets built. One of our fears is that if this type of entity or the city doesn't buy the site, it might get sold to an investor who really doesn't have any plans for it at the moment and has the capability to just sit on it for the next 10 years. That would be tragic. So again, I think looking at ways that a nonprofit entity could purchase it would be very beneficial. Also, nonprofit ownership can help with financing through improved access to public funding sources. So a few action steps related to this would be, number one, to identify a potential buyer. Begin discussions with NVDA and NCIC to gauge their interest in forming a development entity to purchase the site. And if they are interested, begin the necessary steps to form that entity and work on a purchase. Second action step is to conduct a new appraisal of the property. It's important that both the seller and the buyer understand the real market value of the property. From the buyer's perspective, a nonprofit entity is going to need to know, wow, can we afford this? And from the seller's perspective, they need to have some realistic expectations on what they think they can get for the site. There was an appraisal done about a year ago that we did review, and we expressed some serious concerns with the methodology that was used and the results of the appraisal. It was a price that was much higher than we believed the site's worth. So we've recommended that a new appraisal get completed by an MAI-certified appraiser who has a lot of experience working in Vermont. And the good news is, is that there's an appraisal going on right now, and it's being funded largely by the Preservation Trust of Vermont, and that should be done within the next couple of weeks. I'm looking forward to seeing what this appraiser says the property's worth. Action step number three is to begin a dialogue with the current property owner to discuss his plans for selling the property, including the timing, his anticipated asking price, and the process that he's going to go through in selling the property. And also, this would be an opportunity to gauge his interest for possibly selling to a nonprofit development entity. Finally, we're recommending that the city explore other options for possible involvement in influencing who ultimately purchases the property. If it's ultimately decided that a nonprofit entity doesn't make sense for them to purchase the land, then what are some other ways that the city could possibly influence who ends up purchasing the property? And, you know, there's a few ideas that we have. You know, one is to work cooperatively with the landowner so that the city can manage the sale, perhaps through an RFP process. Another idea is that perhaps the city could agree to pay the difference in sale price between a lower offer made by a preferred developer and a higher offer made by a non-preferred developer. But then that creates a situation of where can we get the funding to pay that difference? And then another alternative would be perhaps for the city to be proactive and identify a preferred developer or group of investors and work with them to structure an offer. Strategy number two, evaluate the feasibility of a hotel development. We've talked about already several times, based on our research and conversations with two Vermont hotel developers, there may be sufficient demand to support a hotel in downtown Newport. However, further research is required. Number one, to determine if sufficient demand exists. Also, we would need to determine the appropriate location in downtown. Perhaps the Main Street site isn't the best location, maybe there's some other locations. And then finally, we would need to determine whether hotel construction is financially Some action steps related to this strategy would include retaining a hotel consultant to conduct a hotel demand feasibility study. This study would determine whether sufficient demand exists. They also usually determine the type of hotel that could be supported, whether it's a boutique hotel, or a limited service, or something nicer than that. And they also typically will recommend a number of rooms that can be supported. Right now, this was something that we had recommended to the city and the steering committee a couple of months ago, and efforts are currently ongoing to seek financial, somebody to pay for this study. So hopefully, we'll know within a week or two if we're able to get those funds to pay for this type of study. If the hotel study comes back positive, the next action step would be to hire an architect to evaluate the feasibility of a hotel on three, we're recommending three downtown sites. There's been three sites that have been suggested over the last couple of months, one of them being the Main Street site, another being possible conversion of the State Office Building to a hotel. And then the third site that was recommended, I think at our last meeting, was possibly building a new hotel in the parking lot behind City Hall, in the lot up above the Gateway Center, you know, in the location where it could take advantage of those views. But if an architect could evaluate that and put together some rough costs, which then could be factored into a feasibility analysis. And then finally, if that comes back, if a site is ultimately determined, then perhaps the next step would be to pursue a hotel developer through the RFP process. Strategy number three is to continue to evaluate the feasibility of development options other than a hotel. Alternative development options will be necessary if the hotel study comes back negative, or if it's ultimately determined that the best location for a hotel is either at the State Office Building or in this site behind City Hall. Also, it's conceivable that other uses could be built on the Main Street site in addition to a hotel. This is a pretty large piece of property. Action step number one would be to evaluate the feasibility of a mixed-use residential project. The market assessment indicated strong demand for affordable housing and some demand for higher-end market-rate housing, and we would recommend that a housing consultant be retained to further evaluate the feasibility of a mixed-income project. You know, a consultant who has experience working with affordable housing tax credits, affordable housing of low-interest loans, somebody who could put those pieces together, a financing package together to make something work financially. Another action step would be to evaluate the feasibility of a new State Office Building or a courthouse building, or a courthouse building on the site. If it's determined that the State Office Building is the best place for a hotel, then this would be an option, or evaluating the opportunity for the courthouse to work is probably worthy of further exploration. And then finally, we think it's important that the community continue their search for retail, restaurant, and office users for a mixed-use project. Again, as I stated earlier, pursuit of a development project should start with finding some users first. And it's conceivable that a hotel development could have retail on the first floor, or even a mixed residential project that had retail on the first floor. So it's important to keep looking for some of those users who could occupy that space. Strategy number four is to begin planning now for a public-private partnership. The city and other community stakeholders should be prepared to move quickly when a real opportunity comes forward to do a project on the Main Street site. Some of our action steps we're recommending include reviewing local plans, ordinances, and policies to make sure they support a new development project or allow the type of development project the community would like to see there. One area that we think needs to be reviewed is the Form-based Codes. A couple of stakeholders had pointed out that under the current Form-based Code, I believe the first floor of the building on Main Street is limited to retail and restaurant use, and it was suggested that perhaps hotel or office would be perfectly acceptable. So maybe that should be reviewed and changed if that's something the community supports. Another action step is to identify potential public funding sources to help defray the cost of construction. Begin meeting now with funding agencies to identify these potential sources and understand how the funds can be used, the maximum amounts available, and eligibility requirements. Just have all of that information ready and fully understood so that when an opportunity comes, you can jump on those funding sources right away. And then finally, this is a recommendation we've seen other communities do, and that's to prepare a Main Street site developer package. Basically, it includes in one spot information most relevant to developers who are considering doing a project in a particular location. So it typically includes information on the site, a survey if it's available, zoning requirements, available utilities, permit history, including environmental remediation, contact information, potential funding sources, but all of the information that a developer needs to have before they can make a decision on whether a site is worthy of pursuing. So again, it's another proactive action that the city or the community can take in advance. And then our last strategy is, again, to continue a comprehensive approach to promoting economic development in the downtown. Successful revitalization requires multiple initiatives, which I've mentioned before, to create that critical mass. And we have, in our report and in this presentation, we've suggested a number of ideas that could possibly be pursued. Our scope didn't allow us to really dig into these very deep, but we think they're good ideas that could be done to help generate more activity in the downtown. But it'll really just be up to the community to determine if they're worthy of pursuing and prioritizing, because they do take time and they do cost money. Some of the action steps related to this strategy includes establishing a point person, an organization to promote downtown economic development. This is one we think is very important. And we see this not just in Newport, but just about every downtown across the country that needs to, that's looking to revitalize. Successful revitalization requires a strong downtown organization to take the lead in promoting and carrying out downtown economic development initiatives. So having that entity, that person in place is very important. You know, and we understand that funding those types of positions is an issue. You know, and we understand that funding those types of positions is an issue, but finding those commitments is really necessary to sustain a person and an organization so they can be the constant voice for the downtown. Generate increased activity and excitement in downtown. There's all kinds of things that could be done. Many of them have already been implemented in some form or another, or are currently being implemented. But these include things that can enhance access to and enjoyment of a lake, like expanding the marina, adding boat slips, securing and expanding public green space near the lake, expanding the boardwalk, you know, providing boat rentals on a regular basis, and also expanding the bike path, extending the bike path along the lake, which is currently ongoing, which is great. Other initiatives include increasing the number of downtown events and festivals throughout the year, listing these events in one easy-to-find website. I had a hard time finding out what actually goes on in Newport. So if that could be in one easy space, I think that would be good. Collaborating, oh, I'm sorry, collaborating with JP, which I mentioned before. Another idea is to establish a young professionals group, you know, a group of professionals who are eager to do things in the downtown, have energy, and will meet in the downtown on a regular basis and support the businesses. Another action step is to do things to promote private investment, such as creating a rapid-response team of business professionals that could be on hand to help advise local entrepreneurs or businesses that are struggling, or businesses that want to expand, just provide advice so they can be successful. Establish a facade improvement program is another one that many communities have done, and it's been very successful in helping to improve the appearance of the downtown. Coordinating access to revolving loan funds is another idea. And then finally, plan for infrastructure improvements to support downtown revitalization. So this would include things like, you know, considering establishment of a TIF district, evaluate pedestrian enhancements and weight findings that could be implemented, and also enhancing gateways to the downtown would be very helpful. So that is a very quick and brief overview of the strategies we're recommending. You know, I think I'll probably, I'll conclude with just saying that, you know, to me, it seems like there's some good momentum going on in Newport, and I actually heard that from many of the stakeholders I interviewed. They said they feel very positive about Newport's future. And, you know, again, I think there's good momentum going with the city being proactive and studying options, development options for the Main Street site, even though the city doesn't own the site. You know, the back bike path construction that's going on is a positive sign. The bike path construction that's going to happen soon over, up at Bluffside Farm, various economic development initiatives being worked on by NVDA and NCRC, the upcoming community outreach project by Vermont Council on Rural Development, which I assume, I hear is going to start soon. I mean, these are all, you know, really good things, and, you know, I recognize, or we recognize that revitalization is not easy, like David was saying. It takes time, it costs money, and most of all, requires perseverance. So we urge you to keep that momentum going and hopefully carry through on some of these recommends, these recommended strategies that were suggested.
David, did you want to add?
Just if I may add, just two or three supplemental comments, and then, you know, we're happy to answer. No, 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 you stay up, because you're going to, we need you to answer questions. Just three quick points to supplement what Joe said. One is relative to a potential housing project, I think the kind of concept we've been having would be a mixed-income housing. You know, there wasn't, for a long period of time, when people thought about affordable housing, you tended to build affordable housing projects in isolation, you know, we're building it over there. But the, what's been proving much more successful, if you look around Vermont and the country as a whole, is mixed-income housing projects, where you have some subsidized housing, maybe 20% of the units, you have some workforce housing, you have some higher-income housing, and you blend those together, and that you don't end up with either a stigma or affordable housing that's not well-maintained and becomes slums and so forth. So I think I want to clarify that, that when we talked about mixed housing, we're really thinking about mixed-income housing as a potential on this site. A second point is relative to public-private partnerships, that we recognize that there's limited financial capacity for the city of Newport itself to be able to put in money. I don't think that the city council is going to want to come up, you know, figure out how to, you know, raise huge amounts of more tax dollars and so forth locally. And I think what you need to know is that there are many, many, many financial tools available, some of which are state tools, some of which are federal tools, and there are also opportunities from time to time for the right projects to access private capital, which you might think of as the term that I've sometimes heard used, is slow money, where the people are motivated by their interest in seeing a good project happen and don't want to give the money away, but also don't necessarily need what would be the highest rate of return or the fastest return. So sometimes you can access those sorts of funds. I know that happened, for example, some of you may be aware of the Brooks House project down in Rattleboro, where a major downtown block burned, and a consortium of local people came together, and many of them were local investors, each of whom put in what they could, recognizing they weren't going to get a rapid return on investment. It was going to take time, but they wanted to be sure that that project happened and that Brooks House was renovated, and it was, it did in fact happen, and it's cash-flowing today, and eventually, the expectation is they will get a return on their investment. So there's a range of things available. We're not suggesting that somehow the city of Newport is going to magically come up with mega bucks to do this on its own, but there are tools available, and they've been very successfully used in other communities. And the third point was, you know, the rapid-response team that you mentioned. I wouldn't underestimate how important that kind of thing is. If you think about your typical entrepreneur, a small business person, you know, he or she may have a brilliant idea and be very, very talented in some area, whether it's a really talented chef, whether it's a really talented artist, whether it's somebody who really understands how to select clothing that people want to buy, but that doesn't mean that they understand finance, it doesn't mean that they understand how to get through the permit process, it doesn't mean that they understand how to do good human resource management and select and train staff, it doesn't mean that they know what kinds of public funds and programs might be available to assist them. And so the concept, one of the key core concepts of the rapid-response team is to be able to circle around the entrepreneurs and the business people who are incredibly busy, just trying to start or run their business, and don't have the time necessarily access these resources, nor necessarily all the knowledge and skills, and to really help them to proactively step in, not wait until they are already in trouble because they didn't know those things, and then come hoping they can find help, but rather proactively step in to really work with them and to try to help them do a better job. So I think there's some core concepts there that can be very, very effective. So I want to add those few supplemental thoughts to all of that. And we're happy to ask questions, or however you want to proceed.
First, I'll start with council members. Some questions. Everybody? Then we're going to open it to the audience. Let's see, Colleen had her hand up, and then Anne, and then Ken. I'll run it like, try to keep like a roadmap. So Colleen?
Great, thank you. I wonder if the gentleman would please speak to the specific advantages and disadvantages of creating a TIF district in an economically depressed region with the soft market that you described in the market assessment? Keeping in mind that, you know, better or worse, developers are responsible for the whole to begin with, and how do we rely on developers to have the best interest of the community of Newport at heart? Thank you.
Happy to take that on. And there are really a couple of key questions in what you just asked. One of them has to do with TIF, but the other is the role of the development community and the, vis-à-vis the role of the community as a whole. And we're not, tonight, prepared to go into TIF in great depth. It's a complicated topic about which I know a great deal. I would, I don't think I'm being too strong a statement to say that I'm one of the top experts in the state in how TIF works. That said, I'll try to address that very briefly, but it's not the core of what we're talking about tonight. And if the municipality decides, and the community decides you want to pursue a TIF district, there'll be multiple public hearings. There's required public process for that, and public participation in that, where there'll be a lot of opportunity to get into a great deal of depth, so that you collectively can decide whether or not you want a TIF district. So rest assured, that's not something that's going to happen without a great deal of process and public input. It's required by statutes, and it's the right thing to do anyway. That said, the thing to understand about TIF district is that the nature of it is it doesn't cost the community money, the, what you're not, and you're not giving developers a tax break. The developers in a TIF district pay every bit as much taxes as they would without a TIF district. The core difference in a TIF district is how those taxes are used. In, without a TIF district, the taxes simply go where they normally go, a portion to the municipality, a portion to the state education fund. In a TIF district, what happens is that the existing taxes off of the properties within the TIF district continue to go where they've always gone, so that if, for instance, you set up a TIF district, and for those of you who don't understand, a TIF district, then it stands for Tax Increment Financing, TIF, you define a very specific geographic area, which property is in it and which are not. And when you establish it, the existing grand list value of those properties, you set that as a baseline, and that baseline, that grand list value, the taxes that are generated by that continue to go where they've always gone. You do not take a nickel away, so the municipality continues to get what it's always gotten, state education fund continues to get what it, it's gotten off of those. But when you then redevelop properties within that, and you start to add value, which is where the increment comes in, because you're taking, it's now new value over and above, the taxes from the new value go first, or a portion of those taxes, not all of them, but a portion of those taxes go first to retire debt. And the debt is money that has been borrowed to build public infrastructure that made the project viable in the first place. I know that's a mouthful, but the idea here is, I'll give you an example, in St. Albans, where we've been deeply involved in the downtown work there, where in order to build a new privately-owned State Office building that pays taxes like any other property, and build a new hotel, and build a new hardware store, we needed more parking that was available. And so we used, and we needed streetscape improvements and some various other things, some brownfield cleanup, there was a range of things. And so what we did was to calculate in advance what it was going to cost to build the parking garage, what it was going to cost to do the streetscape, what it was going to cost to do the brownfields cleanup, and then estimate what the new incremental taxes would be from the new development that was contemplated, and would those taxes be enough to pay the debt service? And we had to balance those things. There's a limit to how much infrastructure we could afford because of how much tax, new taxes we expected to be generated. And in the end, we were able to do it very successfully. The municipality borrowed, in the case of St. Albans, I think the number's roughly $16 million, to do nine million of which went to public parking garage, seven million of which went to brownfield cleanup and streetscape and a very range of things. But the taxes off of those new projects that could not have happened otherwise, that would not have happened otherwise, go first to pay the debt service. Over time, when, as the, as the debt is retired, then those taxes will eventually go back to...
I just want to use a local example.
Sure.
We were one of the first to have a TIF district. If you drive up, if you, we were the one of the first to have a TIF district, and if you drive up Route 5 towards Derby, where the John Deere building is and where Revision Military is, that was one of the first TIFs in the state. It allowed the city, we, we had many public hearings on it, we borrowed the money for the infrastructure for that industrial park, but the TIF, basically, it paid all that debt back, and it was no cost to the taxpayers. And that's how the TIF worked locally. And that's, and since it expired, that's why we had to get the legislature to redo and re, to allow us to possibly have another TIF district. But, I mean, it worked, it worked perfectly in that case up here.
That's a great example. So the concept really is you're using newly-generated tax revenue that wouldn't be there but for the investment that you're making. And so it's not costing local taxpayers. Now, it's true, you're not getting the new tax, tax income to reduce your tax rate in town until the debt is retired, but it's taxes that wouldn't have been there otherwise anyway. So you're really not giving anything up. You're using newly-generated dollars to pay that cost. So that's kind of the core of TIF, and it is not a tax break to the developer at all, because the developer is going to pay the taxes he or she would have otherwise. It's just where, how's that money used is what changes. And so it's a way of self-funding, if you will, the public improvements that make the development possible. Now, your other question, which really has to do with, how can you trust a developer? And the core there is, there are a few things. Joe touched on one of them, and that is, to the extent that you can, can you have influence over who the developer is, you know, and what their planned project is? In the case of St. Albans, for example, the municipality itself, which had a strong economic development team inside City Hall, ended up purchasing the properties where the new State Office building was to be built, where the hotel was to be built, and where the new hardware store was to be built, and then, and ran, in fact, we ran on behalf of the municipality, a request for proposal, an RFP process, for both the State Office building and the hotel. And so the municipality, as owner of those properties, was able to make the choice. Who's the developer we're going to work with?
What's the project going to be?
What's the project going to be? And then to enter into binding contracts. You know, in the case of the hotel, for example, I don't remember exactly, but my recollection, and don't hold me to the details here, because it all, I've done a lot of projects over the course of years, and sometimes I confuse which project I'm thinking about. But, you know, we ended up selling the land to the developer for a dollar because it did need some subsidy. And the purchase, by the way, was paid through TIF as well, so that was not local tax dollars, it was TIF dollars that paid for the acquisition, paid for the brownfield cleanup. We then sold it for a dollar to reduce the cost and close the kind of, help close the kind of financial gap Joe was talking about. But we also built into the purchase and sale contract that if they failed to build the hotel within a certain period of time, the city could take it back, and had basically the right to, a reversion right on it. So that we had control ultimately to ensure, and there was also a process along the way of, first, the city government as the administrative, the administrative and economic development side saying, yeah, we agree with those plans, and then, of course, there was the normal development review board process to make sure that it went through all of the local permitting process. So there was quite a bit of control over all that. So it's a mix of, in this case, you know, we're thinking not that the municipality would necessarily buy the property, but perhaps working with, you know, Dave Snedeker at NVDA and NCIC and so forth, that there'd be a process whereby maybe one of the local development corporations would be the purchaser, and would have direct control over, similar to what happens in the case of St. Albans for the city, over, and run a process for selecting a developer, and then you really, sort of contractually binding them. So there's a whole series of ways that you can protect yourself, and I think do it very successfully. There are no guarantees, I don't want to say that this is risk-free, economic development and so forth, there are risks involved in this, I want to be clear. But that doesn't mean you need to just, that you go willy-nilly forward, and, you know, there are ways of doing it very prudently, very cautiously, doing good financial analysis in advance, and make sure that you've got solid binding contracts that have adequate protections in it.
Let's see. Anne was next.
Hi, I'm Anne Schiraz.
Hi.
We've met once before.
Yes.
I had, I think...
Didn't you suggest the property out behind?
Yes.
I thought you were the one who did. Yes, thank you, it was a great idea.
Well, that's my third point. My first point is that frequently, St. Albans is held up to us, and we talk about it ourselves, St. Albans seems to be a success. And so we would like, obviously, to follow in those footsteps. But I really also think that we are, we need to also consider how, how we are different from St. Albans. St. Albans is a bedroom town, in a way, for Burlington. We are a bedroom town for, well, I mean, St. Johnsbury, and we might have to compete, but, you know, it, it's who's a bedroom town for whom, but it's a very minimal, you know, one-bedroom sort of rental. And so I'd like you to address a little bit of how we're different from St. Albans, and what that means in terms of this. The second thing I wanted to talk about... The second thing I wanted to talk about, I've forgotten for a second. The third thing I wanted to talk about is, obviously, I came to a meeting that I was not invited to, I listened to a number of things, and I came up with an idea that at least you think has some feasibility. I wanted to let you know that in this town, we have retired rocket scientists, we have physicists, we have retired lawyers, active lawyers, young people, professionals, we have farmers, we have, and the more people that get in on the ground floor, I know you've done your, this quote, final report, but I'm telling you that going forward, the more people who hear more about it, the more chance you have of having somebody's imagination sparked and stuff built on. Don't limit yourself, because we do have good people here with really imaginative brains, and I think that's important. And the third thing that I wanted to mention is, is there any value where you just double your problems if you think of dividing the property into two and letting two developers develop properties adjacent to each other? Because one guy might think, well, I can't afford a whole block, but I can do half a block, just as I was listening to you. Or is that like more money, because you have to build two buildings?
So, I'm actually plunging on those too, if you want.
Go for it.
So, in, let's see if I can remember this. So let me start with St. Albans. No question, dramatic differences between the communities. And we mentioned St. Albans simply because it illustrates certain examples, such as how we've used TIF and so forth, and how those mechanisms work. And I absolutely agree, its circumstances are different, it's got a pretty strong industrial base with Milan Technologies, it's got a pretty strong government base because it's also got a major US immigration and naturalization service, whatever it's called, facility there. And so, and it is indeed a bedroom community, so.
And we recently did a market assessment for St. Albans for a different project we're working on, and what David said is right, and they have a higher median household income, they have higher employment, they have faster employment growth going on right now compared to Newport, New Orleans County. And it's because of their location?
Yeah, there's no question.
There's people, many people who work in Burlington are moving to St. Albans or that whole area because the housing is so much less expensive.
So it is dramatically different, so it means that, and so you've got the economic differences that are going on, but you also have just the community difference. I mean, you know, their downtown is more spread out and so forth, yours is more constrained than theirs is. You've got a lot of housing very close into the downtown, your downtown's smaller actually as well. I mean, there are a lot of those sorts of differences as well, and...
St. Albans doesn't have a beautiful lake.
That is also true. There is the lake down, some distance away, but not in downtown. And it's actually in the town of St. Albans, it's on the edge of the town, not the city of St. Albans where we were working. At any rate, so any solution here needs to take into account those sorts of differences. And, you know, there's a question that the market reality here, in terms of market demand for various uses, as well as the kinds of rental rates and so forth that you might anticipate, whether it's residential or commercial, will be somewhat lower than in St. Albans. Not as dramatically lower as you might think, by the way. Certainly dramatically lower than the core of Burlington, but St. Albans is a lot less expensive than Burlington, and you're somewhat less expensive than St. Albans, not as much as you might think.
Right.
But any solution here needs to take all that into account. So that was point one. Point two was involving people, absolutely, I couldn't agree more. And I, our process was not intended to be fundamentally a public process, unlike the upcoming work with Council on Rural Development, which is intrinsically public in terms of that's what it's all about. We were fundamentally brought in as analysts and analysis. Joe spent a lot of time at his computer, at his desk, doing, you know, pro formas and doing, you know, studying demographic data and so forth and so on. So ours was intended to help inform the public process rather than be the public process, if that makes any sense. And that did involve a certain amount of the interviews and so forth, but it's really kind of a process that helps feed in and support the public process. But I couldn't agree more that from here forward, the more public participation, the better, the broader the communication, and, you know, the openness, I think is really critical. Because this is, this is your community, and you've, you know, if you're not part of it, it's hard to then buy into it. And so I absolutely agree with you on that one. And the third one, whether it's one or multiple developers, I think that question's wide open. In fact, I wouldn't be surprised if it's fairly likely that more than one developer. You know, I think about, there's probably, let's take just a supposition here for a moment. If the hotel market feasibility study is done, and if it comes back and hypothetically says that, you know, there's a market here for an 80-room hotel, but not for a 150-room hotel, that site's a lot bigger than an 80-room hotel's going to require. And at that point, we'd be looking at what other uses might we have? And maybe it's something that's phased, that we simply identify, where does the hotel go, what portion of the site, and hold the rest of the site for three, five years, 10 years down the road, whatever the schedule is when the next use comes in. You don't necessarily need to even do them at the same time. But those questions are, I think, to be addressed later. I think absolutely it could be more than one, could be three or four.
That used to be, you can correct me, how many properties down there? Nine?
Nine, including Second Street.
Including Second Street, it was nine properties that eventually became one by the one owner, but way back, it was nine individual properties. So it could be easily divided, I mean, you don't know what's going to happen, but, you know, it could be multiple developments, because way back, that's what it was in the history of Newport.
But I think the key thing, if it is multiple, is that you do enough conceptual planning in advance that, while you can't anticipate everything, that you at least have a pretty clear idea of how the site ultimately will lay out, even if you don't know all the uses that may be there. And you think about how much parking will be there, how are you going to access the property, how might buildings interact with each other? And you won't be able to address all of those questions without having specific uses and designs right away. But one of the things, for example, is the parking. You know, do you maybe right off the get-go, even if you're only building hypothetically a hotel, do you want to actually put in several layers of parking accessed, I'm blanking on the name of the street that's...
Central. Central and Second.
Second's the one that's higher.
This is Second, Second is high.
Second's right here, and then Central, okay.
It's lower.
Do you probably access it from Central? I apologize for getting confused about the street names there, but, and do you, maybe including the existing parking lot, that great parking lot behind, layer parking and then build your hotel on top of it, but you've laid the base that others will then go on top of later? I mean, I don't know the answers to those questions, but those are the kinds of things that should be looked at. You don't want to just plunk a building down and then, three years later, when you want to do the next project, go, oh darn, you know, we didn't think about that. And there'll probably be some of those regardless, but you want to minimize them.
But, yeah, the, that was one thing everyone's commented on, it's a natural contour for underground parking.
Absolutely.
It's actually designed for that, so.
Absolutely.
Next was Ken, and then Tricia. Ken, Tricia, and then, yep.
You said that it might be feasible or better if the city could somehow get a hold of this piece of property down here, and then resell after?
I'm not thinking the city necessarily. You know, it, it needs to have a strong economic development entity that can really run with the ball, and, you know, the city itself doesn't have the staff for that. I'm not sure the city is the right entity in this case. In St. Albans, they did have a strong economic development staff. I am thinking maybe NVDA or NCIC or some combination of the two. I think there may be an economic development, a community development corporation that one of them has a subsidiary that hasn't been active in recent years that could be reactivated. You know, those need to be worked out, but I'm, without, I'm not, at this point, you know, making absolute firm recommendation, but my tendency, as we stand here tonight, is that it's probably not the city itself in this instance.
Now, I guess you've got to look like a big developer in Burlington, is this the Cyx?
Yes.
That knows what something like that kind of developer would appear? He knows, seems he knows all kinds of factors and different things to do.
Well, he understands the market in Burlington, so he knows what the market can support there. Any developer who we are able to attract, if we are able to attract a developer, is going to do a project that they feel can be supported by the market. So probably not something quite as big as what Cyx is doing, I mean, he's doing 14-story buildings, it's obviously residential, market rate residential, it's a big, it's a big project for Burlington.
I guess I'm just looking at the knowledge of the different factors that are turned in.
Most of the, you know, there's a community of developers in the state who are very skilled in using various different types of financial resources, and, you know, we are very skilled in that area, but we don't, we act only in advisory capacity, we don't own projects ourselves, but we know a lot about how you do that stuff as well. So, you know, in the case of, you know, again, I mean, you say St. Albans is an example, but, you know, there were three different developers there, and, you know, we worked with all three of them to help them access, you know, the variety of funds that were available. So I'm not especially worried today about finding a developer who has the sophistication to work with the complexities here.
Now, what a possibility, I don't even know if the city has checked into it, where the sacred heart of the school, is that something that could maybe factor into Newport later on? So it could be done with that piece of property?
I sincerely hope so. I mean, it's, I love the location in terms of up on the hilltop and the raw potential in the building, but it's going to be a very expensive project. My guess is that it's a future phase.
Yes.
Not something that I anticipate. I think right now, the focus, I would urge, is right here in the core of downtown, make this strong and then start to move out from there.
Tricia Ingles with Rural Edge, nice to meet you in person. I don't have a question, I just have a sort of a comment. I just wanted to reemphasize for everybody here that Rural Edge is your local nonprofit real estate developer. And I think in partnership with NVDA, with the city, with the community, and with our other partners, this is the type of thing that we have the knowledge and the capacity to do, depending on the strategy that the community decides to choose. So I just wanted to sort of reemphasize that we are here to do that.
Great, perfect. Are you formally named Bill and House and Trust?
Yeah.
I'm still getting used to the Rural Edge. That may be a long time for you, but I'm serious.
It's our core, it's what we were, you know, created to do, is deal with exactly this type of downtown redevelopment.
That's great.
And they've had some great projects. In access, yeah, all the public funding sources that you think you have access to.
They've had some good projects in town.
Yeah, that's great.
Mr. Granite. My name's Derek Granite. I'm actually the operator of the current hotel in town and one in Derby. And I guess mine's more of a common concern, I know you presented five strategies, I think it's maybe geared more towards the city. You talk about establishing a TIF district, I understand you explained it, but in essence, it's the city taking a loan. I understand if things work out great, it gets paid back. However, myself, my family, we've paid taxes, loans, a lot of time, you know, in the city of Newport for upwards of 30 years now, for the city to take a loan to develop a hotel just doesn't really seem right in my mind. We've expanded, you know, five years ago, $2 million, I didn't see a penny from the city, no help, no nothing. So to hear that the hotel and to get that, you're talking about a TIF district, was essentially you guys taking a loan, doesn't seem really fair to me. It seems more like a slap in the face that someone who's been here for 30 years, you know, and trying to do business and trying to do more, you know, how do you guys feel about that?
Is that something you'd like us to answer?
No, whoever feels they can.
Well, it's basically, TIF is for infrastructure improvements.
I understand.
And it's a way of the city to improve infrastructure. If we didn't have TIF, if we didn't have TIF way back, we didn't have the resources to put in the industrial park that's currently employing about 150 people. It helps you get the money, yes, you have to borrow the funds to do the improvement, but the taxes pay the bond back, so it's no cost to the taxpayers. But if we, but what I'm saying is, if we didn't have TIF to do the improvements in the industrial park where that's employing 150 people, we wouldn't have those jobs today in that park. And that's important for that aspect. And we're looking over here, there's no way that we can afford the city, or anybody can afford to put in the underground parking or other improvements that are going to have to be done without the TIF. TIF is an economic development tool that I've seen work all over the state, and it's not being used to develop a hotel, it's being used to put the infrastructure in to attract any type of development there, whether it's a hotel or office space or residential, senior housing, senior whatever. The problem is, which I know has clearly been stated numerous times, I mean, Mr. Brophy had told me, it costs the same to build here as it does in Chitham County, yet the rents are nowhere near, you can get to pay back the project. So you have to have all these public-private partnerships, you know, and that's the problem. The cost of building in this area is the same as anywhere in Vermont.
But I'm doing it.
What?
But I'm doing it, is what I'm saying, I'm doing it right now without your help.
But you didn't need city infrastructure improvements. This helps with the city infrastructure improvements that we can't afford to do. Am I explaining it correctly?
You're explaining it correctly, but I'm saying, if you're vying for a hotel, you feel that that's an ethical choice as a city.
That's just one strategy.
I understand that.
That's a strategy that they're having a market study done because it was recommended by somebody on the steering committee that they ought to look into a hotel for downtown or on the waterfront. I mean, that was a, that was a recommendation from the steering committee, and I think we need, as a city father, we need to look at all aspects, and they've come up with five strategies and five aspects. How would you?
If I may just simply say that at this point, we're not, while I, I think a TIF district may be an important strategy, I agree with the mayor on that, it's, there's going to be a lot of process before decisions made whether to do that or not. And he is correct that actually by statute, you're not allowed to directly invest in a private development itself. But it's supportive public infrastructure or brownfield cleanup, you can do, you know, so that you can attract, and the choice that a community like Newport faces, and this is not just Newport, this is true in Bennington right now, it's true in Rutland, it's true in Springfield, it's true in many communities around the state and around the country, is, do we do nothing and end up moving along? And there will be some fantastic business people like you who will take the risk and will see the business opportunity and be able to pull it off, and bravo. I mean, I absolutely admire when people are making the kind of investment you're making. But there aren't enough people like you willing to take that risk and willing to do that, and with the capacity necessarily to borrow the funds to do it or whatever it is, so that, you know, we have, you know, look at downtown Newport and, you know, how it struggles. And so the city faces, I think, again, not just Newport, but cities all over the country and all over Vermont, are facing choice, do we step in and do things to try to make development more feasible and to make our community more attractive for development so that we can revitalize our downtowns and attract the businesses and jobs? And TIF is one of those tools. And, you know, there's going to be a lot of process before decisions made whether or not to proceed that way.
And this, one incentive that the city has that we've done to try to attract industry is we have a municipal, I can't think of the name of it now.
Tax stabilization.
Tax stabilization, thank you, David. We have a tax stabilization here. I just couldn't think of the word. Where it depends on, we, the council implemented it, I forget how many years ago now, five, five, six years, what?
More than that.
More than that.
Could include that, I'm here to do this relationship on the first.
Right, but what I'm saying is, we implemented that on our own stabilization where some folks have taken advantage of it to develop, where if you have a certain dollar amount of improvement, you employ a certain number of people, you get your taxes stabilized over, depending on the project, a number of years. The max is 10 per the state law. They only allowed us 10 years. And that was only the municipal tax, we couldn't stabilize education. But that's something that we have done on our own. We try to get all the tools we can to attract people.
Parenthetically, I might say though, is that within a TIF district, tax stabilization contradicts TIF because you want those tax revenues.
No, I know, that's right, right, and that's why, right.
Outside the TIF district, that, but anyway, those are the kinds of choice, you didn't have TIF and you don't have it now, but those are moving forward, you might want to modify that.
Right, right.
Anyway.
I'm going to let other people... I'm going to let other people.
I just want one quick one.
Well, no, I've got other people here. Before anyone goes a second time, I want to get as many of the first time people. And so, and then.
You've mentioned a hotel several times. Could you explain how a hotel in downtown Newport, when we have almost six months of winter and not much going on in the winter, how it's going to really help Newport other than maybe a few months in the summer? Or are you planning on getting a downfall from St. Peak, who already has a lot of hotels to come down here? I'm just wondering how a hotel is going to work.
Those are exactly the questions that the hotel feasibility study needs to answer.
Right.
You know, we are development experts, we're not hotel experts, and so we have gotten a proposal from the Pinnacle Advisory Group out of the Boston area, I forgot exactly which community they're in, and they're hotel specialists. And they will look at it, you're asking absolutely the right questions. I don't want to answer those questions. I will say that there are, as Joe indicated, a couple of hotel developers in Vermont who think there may be an opportunity, there may be enough spillover, there may be enough opportunities. But that's something we don't know the answer. If it comes back and says there's not enough opportunity, then none. It's my hope that there will be, but there may not be.
Has anyone mentioned having a community, multipurpose community center?
The challenge with that is how do you pay for it? You know, it's not that it is a wonderful idea, but, you know, then you've got not just the millions of dollars of capital cost to build it, but the ongoing operational costs. And I'm blanking on the name of it, but there was some kind of recreation facility.
IROCK.
IROCK, yeah.
Well, I wasn't thinking on the order of IROCK, but I was thinking more in terms of having a building that could be used by all kinds of people, like theater, politicians could give speeches and meetings and, you know, I know one lady, one of the, wants a place for this huge square dance group to be able to come and maybe have a kitchen, little kitchen there so people could have refreshments in. Just to have one centralized place to bring a community that's very disparate. We have all, we have, we've got the rich, we've got the poor, we've got the homeless, we've got all kinds of people. If we had a centralized place, it might make the building more cohesive and make the town more attractive.
I tell you, I love that idea. I really do. And I think we're not the ones to make that decision. That's a community decision. And if you as a community, you know, going through the vision process that's coming up and, you know, continuing forward.
It could also have retail space. I'm not saying all communities should have a space.
But that, it becomes an economic question for you, if you as a community want to confine the funds for that, whether it's through bonding, or whether it's through grants, or whether it's through fundraising to help make that happen, hallelujah. I mean, but that's a community decision. And, you know, our task is not to evaluate the feasibility of whether or not, that kind of fundraising could occur, but rather look more at market-driven opportunities. But that's, I'll say that that's not potentially a viable use. If you can, if the community desires it enough, that you can figure out how to fund it.
Or you could combine it.
Sure.
You could have a hotel and a space for people.
Sure. That could happen, absolutely. Again, that's a choice you folks need to make.
Before I go, did you have anything, Stan, that you wanted, because you would just want to.
Actually, no.
No, 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 but I'm opening it, but I want to.
No, I just wanted to, my name's Stan Schopf. I have a seasonal home here that I might have to guess. I think a hotel feasibility study is paramount. Just wanted to reiterate that. And I'm surprised no one mentioned anything about the site of Proudly Beach being a location for a hotel, possibly?
Our focus has been right here in the core.
Right in the core.
You know, again, remember, our specific task wasn't even downtown as a whole, it's that property. And so that doesn't mean that Proudly Beach might not be an opportunity for a hotel, but it's not the area. Honestly, I think that would have less benefit for the community from a physical locational perspective. Maybe viable for the hotel operator, but less benefit for the community than one of the three sites we've identified in downtown itself.
I'm just thinking of the connection that we're having now, and possibly a connection with Bluffside Farms. Anyhow, I'm thinking broader, I guess.
Start here and over time.
Well, I'm thinking a hotel on the lake that has direct access to the lake would draw people here and draw the businesses that would support, people that want to come here. No, I don't know what comes first, the egg or the chicken, kind of what it's all about.
Joe, you mentioned that within 25 mile radius, there are towns that are more economically viable than Newport. Now, I am sure you've included in your speech, I'm sure you've included Jay, but I'm wondering if there are any others.
Oh, we didn't look at specific towns. We just looked at an area that was 25 miles, a ring that was 25 miles outside.
25 minutes.
25 minute drive time outside of the downtown. So I believe that probably did include Jay Peak.
But I'm just wondering if there are others, because we don't really combine with Jay Peak, unfortunately.
Yeah. Well, yeah, I didn't see, I couldn't tell specifically where that growth is occurring, but I suspect a lot of it is at Jay Peak. I mean, because the numbers do show that there's definitely been growth in employment in the hospitality and leisure sector, which I suspect is probably being driven by the Jay Peak. And maybe there's some other things going on too, but.
Why don't you talk just for a moment, because it might help clarify the tool you use to get that data, you know, and how that works, the ESRI tool.
Sure, yeah. I mean, this is a common tool that's used by companies that like to see demographic data and economic data, but it's an online tool where we're able to plug in different geographies, whether it be a 25 minute drive time, or just Newport City, or if we want to see a 10 mile radius. But you can plug in a geography and get all kinds of demographic and economic data. It's all produced by the Census Bureau, but they, these companies aggregate it so that you can just, you know, grab this information from the click of a button. So it's a really powerful tool.
But it's general. What you've got is general, not specific.
It's based on the geography I defined, which was the 25 minute drive time. But we also looked at it from a county level, and what it showed was that the county as a whole is also experiencing some population growth, employment growth, and also growth in households, which is a good sign.
It wasn't massive growth. You know, there's some growth going on, unlike Newport City, which has had some shrinkage. The county's whole and the market area has had some growth occurring.
Woodman?
Yes, I just have one question. I'm a resident of Newport. We've heard a lot about your successes in St. Albans. One other success is, could you briefly talk about of your work in the state of Vermont?
Well, boy, I've wanted for a long time, but how long a resident are you want? But no, look, in all seriousness, we're a 27-year-old company, and so we've been involved in doing development, a lot of private development projects, nonprofit development projects, and public sector projects. So, you know, our clients, in terms of the type of work we've done, extend.
Can you cite specific examples that everyone here would perhaps recognize?
Sure, sure, absolutely. Let me just pull a few of them, give you a sense of the range of things that we do. The University of Vermont Medical Center is a major client. We've been involved in basically all of their development for the last 15, 20 years. So the whole Renaissance Project, helping plan it and do the, all the permitting and so forth. The new corporate headquarters for Northfield Savings Bank that just opened a couple of years ago in Berlin by exit seven off the interstate. We did everything from the site search to the managing the team for design and putting out the bid and overseeing construction. On your co-op city market, an older project of ours in the heart of downtown Burlington, and also the Hunger Mountain Co-op in Montpelier, are both co-ops that, where we worked with them and they were, you know, smaller, little 3,000 square foot holes in the wall and, you know, crumbling buildings, and in both cases helped them obtain site control, do all the feasibility study, package their financing, put out the bid to contractors, and they're both highly successful businesses today. We are, I could go on. You know, we've got, you know, quite, over the years, a lot of projects that we've done around, so, you know, quite diverse.
Thank you.
Yeah. I will say, one of the pieces, I will say, is the vast majority of our work has been in the commercial arena. We've done a limited amount of residential, but that's not our primary specialty.
Colleen, did you have, if you had your hand up?
Yes, I just wanted to commend this gentleman for investing in his community. And just say that in this global economy, that more and more, as you say, this is not a unique situation to downtown Newport. Downtowns all over the country are facing this set of challenges around development, around economic prosperity. And I would maybe just suggest that more emphasis and thought should be put into creating economies of scale where small communities are interdependent and community partners invest in the community, instead of putting some lipstick on and trying to attract some hot Prince Charming developer, who we just have had a bad relationship with in the past. So thank you very much for investing in the community that I live in. I really appreciate that.
Ken and Joe, did you have something to add there? Ken, want to follow up?
You mentioned before something the city didn't have the money to do anything in the hole.
Well, no, I was just, what I was getting at is, when they brought up TIF, TIF is a tool to allow municipalities, it's a tool that would allow, basically, I'll use, I'm going to go back to the original TIF, where the revision military is and John Deere factory. When that was proposed to the city way back, we knew you had to have water, sewer, and infrastructure. The cost of that at the time, the developer, we had someone lined up for it, but it was a way of helping to entice the developer to commit. That's the thing, it's a tool. As David said, you've got to look at all your tools, and that's one tool that we use, and that's been very successful up there. I mean, I look at the 150 jobs, people are working, you know, and that's the one key thing. And it helps municipalities with infrastructure projects. And I look at this over here, and there again, I go back to what it costs to build. It's going to be hard to entice even, you know, with, I can't wait to see what the appraisal was, because we all know it was out of whack. And I can't wait to see what it truly comes in at. But no matter what, it's going to take partnership, it's going to take funding. I mean, we, and I'm going to pick on, I hate to pick on Mr. Boll over here, but he proposed a project for the J.J. Newberry Building. He unfortunately didn't get.
Tax credits.
The tax credits from.
Last year.
What?
Last year.
Last year. What I'm saying is, right, but he didn't get the tax credits last year to help him go forward. And that's critical, you know, for a lot of projects. I mean, Rural Edge, you get a lot of, you get a lot of tax credits, if I'm incorrect?
Bond credits, not the same ones.
Not the same, but you get credits to do the projects. And see, that's what I'm getting at. It's the cost of building. I mean, even some of the projects in Burlington, I don't know how they pay for them. I mean, maybe you can elaborate on that, but some of those projects there, I don't know how they get their, with the cost of them, what you see publishes what the cost is, I still don't know how they get the rents to even make those viable. And so.
Go ask them.
Well, no, but they've done them already. It's a project that's been done already, but I just don't know how they get enough to really, for the developer. They must be in it for like a 100-year long haul or something. But it's just a tool to help.
Just as you have a developer.
It's to help with the infrastructure aspect that would help entice development. And I want to go back, this, I mean, this may not even be a hotel, it may not be anything. It's all depends on the study. We're not using it just to say, oh, we want another hotel. No, we're not using it to say we want another hotel. We're using it to help attract any type of developer that might be interested, or multiple developers. I mean, that's what the TIF is, what we're trying, if we even go for it. Pretty much with TIF, you actually have to have something lined up now before.
Oh, yeah.
That's the way the new law is. Before it was a little vague, but the new rewritten law, you really specifically almost have to have someone signed up to develop the property before you even start to go for the TIF. And that's the one big thing.
So how much will you have, or the council have a say, if they're looking for a developer to give them some kind of idea of what you want in there? Or you're just, whichever one?
Well, no.
I think that remains to be seen. You know, that's part of, if you look at, think of the strategies Joe talked about, one of them is to begin to work with the receiver, Michael Goldberg, and to really talk with him about how the city can play into that process.
Because I certainly don't want him to sell it to someone because the court says, well, you need to sell it tomorrow. We don't want to have him sell it to somebody, as you said, who can sit on it for 10 to 15, even 20 years and not do anything. You know, there are people out there who could do that and just sit on it. And then that doesn't do us any good in that downtown at all. I had someone, I was going to go to Joe, and then I'll go back to you.
This might be a little nerdy, but if the receiver is persuaded to sell to a nonprofit, are there tax advantages that accrue to the investors? And would that be likely to induce him to keep his assessment high but sell at the lower price that you guys are willing to pay?
I don't know the answer to that question. I suspect there are not, would not be tax advantages because, I don't know this with certainty, you don't get those sorts of, what you're talking about basically is a discounted sale. And there's certainly times where a wealthy property owner might choose to sell to a nonprofit at below-market rents in order to take a tax write-off. But you've got to have income to take that write-off against. And in this circumstance, I suspect that income is not there for the write-off to have advantages. So I suspect the answer's no, but I don't know the inner workings of the various entities that Michael Goldberg has control of and whether or not there could be that. That would take a detailed tax analysis that's certainly beyond our expertise. You'd want a sophisticated tax attorney to take a look at a question like that. But I suspect the answer's no.
Yes.
I have a question regarding TIF. We keep talking about the successes, but I've read a lot about the failures, and TIF is usually used in a lot of economically depressed areas, which Newport is. What happens since it is essentially a loan, we're talking about, I'm just going to keep using a hotel as an example, because that's obviously where my head is. So, talking about feasibility study, I can give you a little bit of info. Ever Jay Newsrooms, they add them. With the rise of Airbnb, which the state of Vermont is aggressively trying to get under control, I don't see how adding them, you know, I currently operate 85 rooms in Newport, 55 rooms in Derby, the conference center. Like I said, we added additional, you know, 25 rooms on the scale of Hampton Inn about five years ago. I can show you, you know, our occupancy rates will show you that, you know, they're at the very minimum of what these large chains need to even come into an area. How if they do decide, oh, we think we can make this happen because they're going to take half of my business from both of my projects, they still can't pay it back? Who falls on the default if they default on the TIF?
So, first of all, maybe you should be the developer for the hotel that's deemed to be feasible. You know, I'm all for getting local people to do these projects, so I just plant that seed with you, by the way. Putting that point aside, the, let's be clear that the full faith and credit of the municipality is pledged when you borrow the funds for TIF. So there's no question that the municipality is ultimately on the hook. And so, and the debt is municipal debt, it's not the developer's debt. And also, you're not looking at the tax revenue just from that one project. You set up a district, and to the extent that there are multiple projects that happen within the district, it is the incremental taxes from all those projects in the district that go ultimately to retire the debt. So in, again, I'll confuse St. Albans, but we can also, by the way, we also set up the TIF districts, we set up the TIF district in St. Albans. We also did Barry, Wyver Junction, Hartford, and the second one in downtown Burlington, not the original waterfront one, but the second one that's established. So we've done a lot with TIF, and all of those are performing well at this point financially. And a key, I want to, absolutely, TIF is not risk-free. I said earlier, economic development strategies, like these are not risk-free, but the question is, do you do it prudently? Have you done enough due diligence on the analysis that you are, you can, the city council and the public, when it votes, and by the way, the public has to vote on the bond issue, so there'll be an opportunity for the public to take a look. Does it look like this is sufficiently secure and safe that I have confidence to say yes, and I'm willing to vote yes for this bond? So there's an extensive process in there. And it really comes down to, have you done your due diligence? And do you feel that it's a prudent risk? In the end, though, if something goes awry, and it could, then yes, the municipality's on the hook. In the end, though, if something goes awry, and it could, then yes, the municipality's on the hook.
So, you think that a wise strategy, you have more than one source of revenue? I mean, diversification, obviously, in businesses smart as well as this project, that sounds good. Because if you say you just had a hotel there, and it didn't make it, then you gotta space it.
Sure. Well, keep in mind, there's still value there. You're not talking about whether the operating business is successful, you're talking about what the value of the real estate is. Because the tax revenue is off the grand list that you're using, not, you're not using the rooms of Neil's Tax, for example, off the hotel. So, even if the hotel were to fail, there's still property value there. May not be as much as an operating hotel, to be sure, but there's still property value there that still should be paying taxes unless the whole thing goes bankrupt and it ends up being worthless, which, you know, in a worst-case scenario, I suppose, in theory. But, but to your point, in an ideal world, when you set up a TIF district, you're anticipating more than one project, and you're planning for more than one project, and you're building your strategy on more than one project. And again, I want to be clear, it's, we haven't even gotten into a TIF analysis. I have no opinion whatsoever, standing here tonight, as to whether or not a TIF district is viable for Newport, and, you know, what kind of timing it could be, what kind of infrastructure, how large the loans would be, what, you know, I have no idea about those things. We've done zero analysis of that. That is a further step, that if the city wants to pursue it and will be in a much better position to answer the kinds of very appropriate questions you're asking. Those are the right kinds of questions.
But no, right, I appreciate the questions, I really do. I was just using the example we have, because we know it has worked here in the past, and that's what I was trying to get at. And TIF has worked all over the state, and has any of them ever failed?
No.
Where the developer has defaulted, where the municipality was liable for the bond?
There have been, there have been historically 11 tapped TIF districts in Vermont. Nine of them are still operating. One of the ones that's not is the one here in Newport. Another one, the other one that's not currently operating was in Colchester. And they actually set up the TIF district, some circumstances changed, and they closed the TIF district without ever borrowing money. And so, I can, or building infrastructure. I consider that to be a success, because it worked the way it should. They did their prudent due diligence and said, oh, my goodness, this doesn't look right. We're not gonna, we're not gonna go to the voters and ask to borrow money. Of the nine, then, that are still operating, every one of them is cash-flowing. Every one of them is, is paying its bills and has not required dipping into the public, the previous other public sources.
Right.
They're all working.
I wish I had the dollar amount of what the property was worth before the develop, you had those numbers when we were in Montmore.
Yes, I don't remember off the top of my head.
I don't remember, but it shows the value, David, he had, Mr. White having the value of that property with revisionist before the TIF and before the development to what it is now, and it's a big, it showed that TIF helped.
Well, I do, one of the numbers I can tell you, and again, if you're going to go back to St. Albans as an example, but the, what was called, what's called the OTV, the Original taxable Value within the TIF district, when it was established was just a hair over $100 million in the district in St. Albans. I would say it's 104 million or something like that. Four years later, over $45 million had been added to that grand list within the TIF district. You're talking about 40% growth in four years. It's just absolutely phenomenal. And those funds are easily cash-flowing in terms of paying the bill within the district.
I look at, even if we get 10%, you know, whatever, you know, a certain percent.
That was extraordinary.
No, I know that is.
I'm not predicting it would happen in every community that we would do that, but, you know. Nonetheless, now, I don't know off the top of my head the numbers, although they're available, and I actually have some of them back at the office for, say, Berry's TIF district or White River Junction.
And the only reason why ours went away is because we paid the bond off. They go away after you pay your bond off, is what they do. There's a question behind you, Ed Barber, and then...
If you have a new grand list number for the hole in the ground, which apparently includes substantially less value than the way it's apparently traded, is the city allowed to change the value of the grand list to reflect the new appraisals?
Well, the appraisal process is different than the public assessment process. In theory, in an ideal world, they should be one and the same. If you, that, you know, whatever the fair market value an appraiser says it's worth, and thus whatever it sells for, it sells for that. And appraisers make mistakes too, right? They aren't always right. They're using their professional judgment based on research. But the, whatever that value is in an ideal world, it should align more or less with how the city has it assessed. As for what the actual process is for the city to adjust it, I suppose a property owner, if the city has it hypothetically assessed at $1 million, and it ultimately sells for half a million, the property owner can go and grieve the assessment and modify it. You know, so there are mechanisms for that, but it doesn't automatically adjust, is my understanding.
In this case, why wouldn't Mike Goldberg want to have a lower assessment than his job to get the most value?
I'm not saying he would. I'm talking about an ultimate buyer. In his case, absolutely, his job is to get the highest price he can possibly get. So, there certainly would be some tension between, you know, I think, the public interest in having it be able to be bought as cheaply as possible so that a project is more viable, and his fiduciary responsibility to get the highest possible price.
I guess my question then to the city council is, is the city allowed to change the assessed value, seeing how it came about through a formula? Are you allowed to change it if you don't agree with the assessment?
The only people that can change the assessed value is the Board of Civil Authority, and it's got to go through a grievance process and a appeal hearing. They're the only people that can change the assessment.
And who can initiate the process?
It has to be done by the owner.
If the owner doesn't agree with the value, he grieves it for the assessment and goes through the process.
So, in other words, the city can't do anything about it?
City council can't do anything about it, right.
Jenna Kloski with Council on Rural Development.
Thank you.
Is it appropriate to say a few words? I don't want to take time from public comment. I'm not a member of the public.
No, but that's okay, but you're, you're the next visitor, that's, you're the...
That's right, yes, I just wanted to mention this, it's come up a couple of times, and, and someone over here mentioned kind of tapping into the ingenuity and creativity of folks locally. So, I, I work with the Vermont Council on Rural Development. We are a neutral, independent, I made the stand for a second, it was a bit annoying. We're a neutral, independent facilitator of public process in Vermont, and we've worked with about 57 towns over the last 20 years on something we call a community visit process. And actually, we've been working specifically in the Kingdom for the last few years with Island Pond and Linden, and we're just wrapping up the process in Burke now. And we've been invited by the city council to have a public process in Newport. And it's gonna be kicking off pretty soon here. So, essentially, just to kind of back up, we're not social engineers, just like White and Burke here. You know, we don't know what's best for, for Newport, and we really turn to all of you and to your friends and neighbors to say, what are the priorities that you want to take on now for the future of your community? And so, the goal is to find those common goals and initiatives, set core kind of concrete priorities for action, and then to engage local volunteers, engage local residents, and connect with resources, folks like NVDA, like NCRC, like Rural Edge, and state and federal partners as well, to help get those things done. So, you know, in some ways, the ideas coming out of that process might connect to some things here, you know, downtown development trackies, but also recreation and events and other community engagement and activities. So, to really broaden that conversation and see are there ways that folks in this room and many, many others can plug in and get involved. So, just a quick rundown, starting now, we're gonna be calling around to folks locally and trying to build a group of local representatives that connect to all different voices in Newport, from the school, youth, you know, maybe from, from the hospital, from the city council, the planning commission, all different parts of the Newport community. You know, the key in this process is that, even though we've been invited by the city council, everyone's equals in this process. And we really start from that place to say, who are all the people that should be around the table? We bring them together to frame the process, and then we're looking at early December for that first big public meeting, where we are gonna do a deep invitation process to everybody in town. Hopefully, everyone hears about it five different ways, and then we get folks in the room to, to start to brainstorm ideas. And then we'll walk through a, a process to set priorities and then build action plans. So, just a quick rundown, and we hope that you'll all be involved, and bring in all your friends and family and neighbors as well. So, and, and I love the term, I think you said inherently or inherently public or... intrinsically public, that's the word. I love that, I'm gonna steal it and use it.
Go for it.
That's really what it's, what it's all about, intrinsically and aggressively public, so.
And it's a great process. I've been to a bunch of them now, it's wonderful.
Okay, anything else? Any council members have anything?
Yeah, I do, thanks. So, looking at the action steps, specifically about continuing implementation of a comprehensive approach to promote downtown economic development, I can't help but notice on suggestion 5.2, generating increased activity and excitement in the downtown, actually, the one above it as well, establishing a point person or organization to promote downtown economic development. We have Newport City Renaissance Corporation that, that gets an appropriation each year to, to do exactly that. And it is very disappointing that when you go to look for events at one central location or a website, that you can't find anything. And that's a complaint that I hear everywhere where I work, in many different communities. But the difference between those communities and this one is that just a couple of years ago, Renaissance invested, I think it was about $30,000 to create a new website. And that calendar was supposed to be integrated into that. And it's, it's, I can't imagine how much lost economic development and retail traffic that we've lost just by virtue of not having that calendar, that website that needs to be updated constantly, and not having that point person saying, hey, we're Newport, come and live here, work here, play here. So, I just want to point that, that out, that we have that resource that's not being used effectively.
And I think it'd be great to see NCRC revitalized itself. But it's, I see Karen back in the corner here.
I think, and I, I'm proud to say, we have all of our board members here tonight from NCRC, and we have former volunteers, and I think we agree wholeheartedly that the downtown organization should be a point place for economic development. What we would say to the community, because a number of you have been here for this, is that the organization must be supported. It must be supported financially, it must be supported in terms of community input, it must be supported in terms of ideas. But I think any one of you who've been here at these meetings over the last, how many years, see the constant erosion of that organization by community members. And so, I think we are at a turning point where we say, we are maintaining the designation, the board is doing the work to do this, because the designation is important to downtown, to our growth. We are at a redesignation point. The board is saying, if there's not the community support for this, then should we go for the redesignation? If there is community support for this, we've got to see it. And we've got to have the financial support. We have to go out and find somebody at a, at an allocation that can provide the salary that's needed to hire a person. We can't do it on a part-time staff person. And Julie, you know that firsthand, you, you work for Renaissance Corporation as a part-time staff person. You know the work that goes in to just maintaining the organization. And so, I would say, there must be financial support, there must be community support, and there must be work that's done together. The organization can't be used as a weapon to, to grind axes against other agendas, which it has been used for in the past. And so, we need to come together as a community to support these economic development tools. That's what it is fundamentally, is an economic development tool, is a community development tool that allows community access and input into the growth and development of their community. If this community doesn't want that, it doesn't matter how many benefits it allows for the community, we simply can't sustain it. So, I would say, that's a decision we put out to the community. If this is something you want, you've got to provide the support for it. That's what I can say.
Okay. Anything else, Mr. White, and Mr. White?
I have a comment.
Is it related to this?
It's related. You just, you just let Karen talk for a couple of minutes. I want, I want to say, and I think it's important, that support is a two-way street. You know, when Susan was mentioning before that we've had volunteers here who have never been recognized in a, in a substantial way for the kinds of hours they put into volunteering in this community, she was saying something similar. And when Renaissance doesn't support its volunteers to the extent that they turn and run the other way, they have to not blame the community, but look at themselves. It's easy to blame the other guy or look for somebody else to blame. It's harder to say, what am I doing wrong to these volunteers that they run? When obviously, people left and right are willing to volunteer to do things in this community, and without even getting the recognition. And all it takes is, my God, Susan, you did a marvelous job on the window. Pam and Victoria, you did a marvelous job on that fence. And, you know, we don't want to mention it just once, we want to mention it a couple of times so that you really feel good about it. But, you know, they're so silly, they continue to volunteer and do some other things constantly for free. And then you go and you blame the volunteers for why your organization doesn't work? Look at yourselves to start with, really do an examination of yourselves.
Here's your answer. Anything else?
On the plus side of that, we have such amazing volunteer power in this community. We have so many dedicated people who put time and effort and money into making this community the best place it can possibly be to live, work, and play. And having you guys affirm some of those things in your report is awesome. So, thank you for being here.
Great, thank you.
Thank you. Anything else, then, thank you for coming.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Terrific.
I see you then, okay. We'll move on. The next item was, was the extra mile day proclamation. I think at this point, I'm gonna withdraw doing it because it's caused too much controversy, because we're not recognizing individual people. It was meant to be a generic, to recognize anybody who, who volunteers and does an extra mile. But I'm gonna withdraw it, I'm not gonna sign it. So, we'll notify the folks that this will be the first year in a few years that we won't be doing it, but since it's so controversial, I'm withdrawing it.
Mr. New? I wouldn't consider that controversial. I think it was an honest suggestion that was misunderstood and unfortunately rose to a level that was unpleasant. But I see, I mean, I would really like to see the proclamation go forth.
No, I'm gonna withdraw. No, no discussion, there's no vote, so there's gonna be no discussion on it.
That's pathetic.
Oh, if you don't like this, you can leave. If you don't like it, you can leave.
The request was a simple one, for people to get recognition at the time, which they never get, is, that's all it is.
I'm not gonna get into it, all I know is that the window was acknowledged several times.
No, not by you, not here.
Yes.
Susan came in week after week and told you about the progress. And you blew it off, you sat there, we don't comment in front of you.
The fence has been acknowledged, and so, I mean, I don't know how many times we have to acknowledge, acknowledge, acknowledge. But this was meant to be an overall acknowledgement of all the people in the community. But obviously, it's not good enough, so I am withdrawing it, and it's not even gonna be considered. We'll move on to new business, Mr. Johnson.
Nope.
Mr. Wilson.
No.
Ms. Robard.
No.
I don't have any new business. Any new business?
No, none of business.
Okay, we can move on to old business. Mr. Johnson.
Nope.
Mr. Wilson.
No.
Ms. Robard.
No, thank you.
I've got some old business. I don't only have old business, but I want to correct something that was stated at the last council meeting. It was stated that we received approximately $10,000 worth of work from NVDA for the maps, for the downtown renewal and the municipal plan. That is not accurate, NVDA normally only charges $2,000 to $2,500 for that, not $10,000. I wanted to have that corrected. It was also stated that Mr. Dreher initiated the conversation, so, about the maps. That is not true either. NVDA works with the city for the past umpteen years. They, they, they're our regional planning commission. Their job is to help municipalities come up with maps. And so, Mr. Dreher had nothing to do with initiating that conversation. As a board member of NVDA, I've been a member of NVDA... As a board member of NVDA, I've been a member of NVDA board for ten years, vice president of the board for Orleans County for the last two years. NVDA has worked with the city extensively over the past twenty years, and so the whole issue of the maps came about at a meeting over ownership of one map. And so instead of debating the ownership of a map, it was decided by NVDA that they would do the maps for the entire plan for the city. And so, and because the plan, the city plan said the maps were under construction, or there was some issue about the maps being under construction, and it was easier for NVDA to create a completely new set of maps for the city. And so I just wanted to state that as the accurate, as information. That's all I have on the old business. Any old business? Old business?
I have two things, please. One is, I want to remind folks about the meeting at Efficiency Vermont, the sub-stake tour tonight. I've got posters right here, and it starts at six o'clock to seven-thirty at the Gateway Center, and Efficiency Vermont would like to hear from members of the community, so I'll plug through that. Under old business, the other thing I have is that the Suez Company is about to start the refurbishment of the water tower, and they've contacted me to let me know that the city has the option to include lettering on the water tower, and I wanted to bring that to the council's consideration. This is an example of a water tower in New Hampshire, and they could do something like that for the city for an additional cost of six thousand dollars. Considering this is a once-in-a-lifetime opportunity, it's never been done before, I wanted to know what the council's desire was. We do have funding in the budget to be able to do that if the council leaves at some
Is there a potential design?
That right there is six thousand dollars. If we were to add anything more, your price goes up. So I was looking at something that was pretty frugal, given the opportunity, I just wanted to balance it in the most modest way possible. I went for the seal, the city's seal, and I, it chokes me how much that was, we can't do the seal.
But you are looking, not just the lettering, but to change the color a little bit, to have it better blend in?
Just a very slight, a little more greenish color into it, and any lettering would be the color black. So we're getting samples, and the recommendation from the company is to, again, keep it soothing so it blends in. Right now, it's a pretty, pretty bright blue, I think it's a Robin's blue, so I'm getting some samples, and the goal is to bring it into a little bit more blending, comfortable shade. So I didn't know how council might feel about that, but I'm interested to know whether or not you want to proceed on something like that. It would probably say, Newport City, Newport City welcomes you. I mean, I, we don't have to spend a lot of time on this because it's going to happen imminently if it happens, so.
I know down south, in all my travels to Texas, it seems like every town's water tower down there has either welcome to such-and-such or the name of the town, but I think I'd rather see some sketches or whatever, proposals, and costs.
All right.
Yeah, no, yeah, yeah, that's...
And I would continue with what will probably be the second of many times I've said is, what about having it offering bilinguals, that's one more word.
That would probably cost more.
Well... Welcome, be a venue.
Yeah, be a venue, different setting.
Yeah, yeah. All right, I'm going to be speaking to the crowd tomorrow, and it just gets ridiculous and crazy and expensive all the time.
Okay, all right. The other old business. And the next meeting, did you have something else?
That was it, the one with remind people about the community visit tomorrow night, and I did this under old business because we've got the Suez contract pending, so that's all I have. Thank you.
Okay. The next meeting will be Monday, October 16, six thirty PM here in the council room. The next centenary meeting will be October 25, five PM.
Will the bond here be at the beginning of the meeting or before the meeting?
The next bond, the bond will be right before...
Not here, I mean, it's public information.
Yeah, it'll probably be right at the beginning.
That's how we've usually done in the past, is, right, we usually have that right before the council meeting, have the public hearing, whether it's the bond or zoning by law or whatever. Okay. We need a motion to adjourn at twenty fifty-three. Motion made, let's just get it, discussion, if all is in favor, say aye. Opposed, eyes happy, motion carries.